All right, Ms. O'Callaghan, would you help me with the roll call, please?
Councilmember Borelli?
Yeah.
Councilmember Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Here.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Mayor Thomas?
Here. All right, thank you very much. Announcements to the public, do we have any announcements to the public? Mr. Morris, all right, thank you very much. If we can get a motion to adopt the agenda, please.
Move for adoption.
All right. All right. We got Councilmember Neal seconded that, we get a roll call.
Councilmember Borelli?
I mean here.
Neal?
I.
Councilmember Neal?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and that brings us to our, the headline of the evening, which is our 2021-2022 Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program Budget Review and Discussion. This is a workshop only, and we won't be making any decisions on the budget tonight, but we are, just for informational purposes only. And with that, I'll turn it over to, who am I turning it over to? Dave Warren or Mr. Morris?
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll start, and then Dave's gonna do most of the presentation, but thank you. I just wanted to let everyone know that we've done some work, as you know, since our last meeting, looking at what we can and can't do, and we have some options, but we put together a budget for you tonight that is balanced for the-
You don't sound like you're on-
Currently. Well, I'm not on a microphone.
Oh, okay.
But they, they should be able to hear us.
Okay.
You hear me okay, Michael? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yep, loud and clear.
Thank you. So, anyway, I'm gonna have Mr. Warren go through his presentation, and then we'll go through individually the changes that we have, or the, the, the programs we've implemented since we saw you last to come to a balanced budget for the current fiscal year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dave Warren.
Thank you, Cleve. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have a presentation for you tonight, and this is a follow-up to your budget workshop on May 6th, where we discussed over $5.6 million in requests. And so what we're gonna do, up here, to show you the budget with those requests and adjustments that we've made. So tonight, we're gonna take a look at your sales tax trends, we're gonna take a close look at the general fund, all of your other operating funds, as well as your capital improvement program budget. And then after that, Cleve's gonna walk us through, he's gonna give us a presentation on the American Rescue Plan, or ARPA, and kind of gather your thoughts, as well as the public thoughts, of how do we use that $2.1 million of funds we anticipate receiving over the next 12 months. Looking at your sales tax, your Bradley Burns, which is your general fund sales tax, was 1% of the 8.25 overall sales tax. It's your most significant local economic indicator. It represents 59% of your total general fund. And you continue to have strong per capita sales tax, right? As of 2020, it was $508 per person in the city of Glasserville. We were currently ranked number 25, it's the first time we've ever been in the twenties, and out of 539 cities, we hope to be number one somewhere. Your quarter ended December 20th, 2020, sales tax were actually up, even though we were in a pandemic, by a little over $34,000, or 2.3% on the cash base, the actual money we received. However, if you take out prior period adjustments, that increase was actually 5.7% or $84,000. We performed a little bit less than the statewide average of 7.46%. Again, not bad during a pandemic. And then just showing you your contributors, you can see the state pool continues to grow because of online sales taxes, mostly county pools. That used to be like a single-digit part of your percentage of your portfolio, now it's 31%. We anticipate that over time will probably shrink a little bit as we pull out of COVID, but they're saying that folks have kind of gotten used to online sales, and that'll probably be much higher than it's been historically for some, going forward. And then autos and transportation, 27%, and construction and building supplies, 60, you need to see the other categories there. And that's important when you look at this next graph, where it shows your growth for the fourth quarter. You can see that autos and transportation, again, even though you're in a pandemic, a 4% increase here over here, building and construction, a whopping 20.3%. And then you can see the other categories, again, state pool, 23%, big increase because of those transition to online sales. And again, Glasserville's regular sales tax represents about 20% of the counties, and because of that, we get 20% of that pool money for every online sale in the county, whether it's South Lake Tahoe or County Park. We get a piece of the action, which is pretty cool. And then historically, you can see what our sales tax, how it's performed, the red bar indicates actual cash, the blue bar indicates adjustment for inflation for that year, and the green is cumulative inflation. And you can see with cumulative inflation, we anticipate this coming year, '21, '22, operating at about the 12, 13 level because of inflation. Yes?
Mayor, I just want to make one comment, it's actually back on your previous slide about online sales. I'd encourage you to pay attention to the state legislature and bills that are proposed up there, there's a lot of work to change what is happening with online sales. Generally, they're looking at, changing it to where one of the bills would propose that it would be based on where the item is purchased. So we would only get sales tax for what is purchased within our city limits. So we're, we're benefiting from more than that right now. I can't say for sure, that's true, but I'm guessing that we would be a loser in that type of plan. So just, just a mention for you to watch that legislation, I don't think there's anything that's current, I think that was turned into a two-year bill that was proposed, so it's not active this year, but just something to pay, there's a lot of dynamics going on with online sales right now, and so we need to pay close attention to that.
Thank you, Cleve. Yeah, that's a great point. One of the things we just learned yesterday in meeting with HCL is that the pools were established administratively. So the mechanism that drives that was done by staff, the board of equalization, probably 70 years ago, or maybe a little bit longer than that, but. So there's no law or regulation that kind of protects those, until we're a little concerned about that. I think the pool has been in our favor when you look at direct sales versus the pool sales, so something we need to monitor.
That's why I was just gonna, I wanted to ask you, what do you mean, that they don't benefit? What, how did you just put it, that, what's the objection?
Well, we get currently, currently, because we earn 20% of all sales tax in the county, so all online sales, we get about 20% of all the online sales hit in the county currently, with the cooling, the county pool system. If that were to go away, we would just get the direct sales within the city of possible online sales.
I understand that, but who's objecting? The, the-
Those, in this county, I'm not familiar with anybody, possibly outside of the state, there's, say, cities that feel like it's disproportionate.
I was just gonna say, the larger areas again, attacking us little guys.
Could be, I don't know for sure, but they didn't really disclose that, but it really depends on your position, each county and city's different.
Oh, yeah, that's true, too.
So, but right now, it's good for us, so hopefully, we'll, we'll keep you posted on that.
That doesn't happen very often, so.
Right. So at the very bottom of this slide, you can see that the 2021 forecasted sales tax was just over $5.6 million. And then for 2021, we're forecasting, based on HCL forecast, a little over 5.7, almost 5.8 million.
20, 21, 22, you said, 21.
Excuse me, 21, 22.
Yeah.
That's about $175,000 increase, or about 3.14%. Switching gears to your general fund.
How does that compare to, do you have an idea of 2019?
2019, I don't have the exact number, I want to say it was around 5 or 6%.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah. Yeah, stop me at any time if you have questions. The general fund, it's your only true source of discretionary dollars, meaning you can really use it for most services within this government. It pays for most major city services, including public safety, street maintenance, parks, recreation. In developing this budget we're about to present, we began with a status quo budget, and what I mean by that is post-pandemic. In other words, we're assuming we're gonna reopen the pool, operate it both the summer and in the next spring, you know, Goldberg Park, those things that we kind of forewent this year because of the pandemic, we assume we built those back in for the most part. So it does maintain this budget, the existing program delivery to the greatest extent possible, and it does include foreseeable projected economic impacts. Notice I use the word foreseeable, we're in a very strange time, kind of like the late seventies, when you had hyperinflation sectors like lumber, steel, anything petroleum. So we're hoping that is more of a short-term issue and not a long-term, but we did assume the best of our ability, what we think, you know, for example, fuel for our vehicles, medical insurance, those kind of things, what we think is gonna happen. We did build in a $75,000 contingency for unexpected expenses, and that's the same level as last year's budget. We assumed a 10% increase in medical insurance, 7.4, 1.4% increase in minimum wage, you might recall, it's now $14, it'll go up to 15, and that's the cap the state kind of set. That doesn't mean it's not gonna go up again, but that's kind of, when Governor Brown was in office, that was his goal, to get to $15 an hour. And then just as a reminder, retiree medical costs, we just budget, pay-as-you-go, there's nothing pre-funding at this time. As a matter of fact, for your miscellaneous employees, we now, through negotiation, we no longer offer retiree medical, starting July 1st of last year, so that's in place. So that'll start saving in that area as well. We did assume the increase impurs, your pension costs are going up by $115,000 just for your general fund. Looking at your debt, just want to show you what your debt service or your payments on interest is principal and interest. You can see the total is $2.7 million, most of that to your sewer enterprise fund for the improvements to the plant that was done in 2009. So for the general fund, $114,000, you can see the other funds there, again, most of that, the $2.5 million from the sewer enterprise fund for improvements to the plant. One of the new things we added was that CEC loan, and we are, we assumed lower utility costs because of that, because we replaced lights in our HVAC systems and certain facilities, so helps pay for that debt service. Transfers, so because we're a local government, we use fund accounting, and we transfer transfers from one fund to another, as long as it's appropriate. One of the things we do in order to maintain our roads is transferring our gas tax to the general fund to fund public works for their activities. And you can see that the transfer for gas tax to the general fund is going from $291,000 to $302,000. However, I just received a revised forecast from the League of California Cities, and that number's actually dropped to $289,000 based on current trends. People are driving less, sales are down overall year-over-year, so slightly less. Now, I wouldn't be surprised if that bounces back up later next year, so I'm hoping that number will be closer to $300,000 by the time we're done, but that just means slightly less, about $13,000 less to your general fund. You can see the other ones there, parking fund, $8,600 paying back to the pay stations, or excuse me, for these spaces that the city uses. The transfer to Measure J to help it balance, that's tapped out. And then general, general fund to general liability, that's for your property insurance, your general liability, that is kind of a wild, a wild card. We assume 20% increase in your property insurance, and it could be actually higher because of trends right now. And general liability is also kind of a wild card right now because of what they call social inflation, and that may change. Looking at your budget, your general fund budget, you can see that the revised general fund budget revenue was $8.8 million in 2020-21, and then in 21-22, we're assuming nine. We'll talk about more, what, what that is made up of. The operating expenditures before adjustments, 9.3, and then the transfers in of $152,000, you have a total of about $9.4 million. At that point, you actually have a $252,000 deficit, or excuse me, surplus, yay! Unlike last year, we had a $1.6 million deficit. And then the adjustments, so these, these items have, these are proposals to you, this whole thing's a proposal to you, but, and we'll talk more about what's included in those dollar amounts later. But other budget adjustments, that's primarily because our sales tax is coming in a little higher than what we originally built in our staff when we were talking about our sales tax. And those are included, there's a summary sheet like this that shows those. So ASLs, those are alternative service levels, those are any main positions, primarily, and there's some IT services we'll talk more about, but an increase of $133,000, capital out, that's basically equipment, we're recommending $136,000 for that. And then conference training and travel, net of post-reimbursement, $10,000. So $234,000 in adjustments, that leaves you with a $17,000 surplus. However, the gas tax issue, it takes down to about $4,000, because we're, we're not gonna get as much sales tax. Looking at the revenue, we talked about sales tax, you can see a year-over-year budget now, this is budget versus budget, 6.5%. All other taxes, that would be property tax, your business license tax, county occupancy tax, your surtaxes for cable, electricity, so on and so forth, garbage. Those are included there, transfer tax for real estate, that's up by 7%. Construction permits, Mr. Rebus tells me that he anticipates 22% increase in budget, that's about $27,000. Intergovernmental revenue, that is primarily property tax and a little vehicle license fees. And we actually assumed last year's actuals, so we could see a bump there, but we're showing 5.2% increase. Charges for services, there's a lot of decline there, so a big increase, but the reason for that is, is recreation and parks fees. So that includes development fees, again, your special interest classes, aquatics, Goldberg Park. But keep in mind, last year, we, we budgeted closing the park, not running aquatics, but first half of the year. And so now we're building that back into your budget. It looks like a fail, my goodness, you know, we're getting more money than we are, well, not really, it's just we're catching up to where we used to be. Fines and forfeitures, just a nine, or excuse me, $9,000 increase there for vehicle fines and forfeitures. Use of money in property, that's basically interest and sundries, rents for town halls and other facilities, increase of $70. And other financing sources, just basically your indirect cost to larger sewer funds, and that's basically flat. So an increase overall of $931,000, or 10.52%. Any questions on that slide? Seeing none, we'll move on to expenditures. So similar story, we, we built in expected costs, again, we looked at all your health and welfare benefits, pers is going up. We looked at, you know, again, medical insurance, all your ancillary insurances. We assume what staff, each employee's gonna be in, we assume inflationary cost for fuel and other things. So you can see overall, fleets, about almost $100,000 there, development services, $165,000, engineering down slightly because of reorg. Cost recovery, $87,000 down, community services, $627,000. Again, that's, that's, big change is because we're now doing recreation programs, building in on that side of the ledger. And all the other departments, you can see slight adjustments there, non-departmental, that's everything, for example, audit, transfers in and out, contingency, those kind of things. Animal control's building up slightly, but overall, because of, and actually, it's a, it's, it shows a, a decrease overall of $142,000, or 14.42%. So expenditures up overall, $839,000, or 9.4%. And then looking at each department, proportionally, that represents, so this is a general fund dollar, so you can see the lease is 33%, or 33 cents per dollar. Community services, 27, non-departmental, 9, administration, 8, public works, 7, development services, 8, finance, 5, engineering, 2, and elected officials, 1 cent. You're very fortunate.
We all, we're always worth 1 cent.
That's right. On that. So now we're gonna kind of transition to how did we get here? So the budget finders you received last night had a bunch of spreadsheets, and so what we've done is we updated those spreadsheets to show you what we're recommending. So what we, we feel highest priorities are for each category, so I'm gonna show you that just in a minute. So again, these are the adjustments, the only thing I just want to point out is that, so this is really for staff, as we were developing the budget, we had a base number, and so to account for every dollar. Since the last time staff met, we found that sales tax is actually, it's forecasted to be $27,000 higher than what we actually forecasted. And then in talking with Ms. Neese or city engineer, we discovered that there's $18,000 CIP inspection costs that are billed directly to projects. While we built it into our general fund, however, it never really touches the general fund, it's billed directly to the project and usually to the funding source, for example. If it's a water project, we could go to the water enterprise fund, which could be Measure L or Measure H funded as well, or our transportation fund for transportation grants. So we pulled that out, I'm glad we have that possession, yeah. Alternative service levels, I know this is kind of hard to read, hopefully the folks in home could be able to all increase it, size, just a little bit so you can see it. Still, still small there. At least you can see the title and stuff on there. All right, so the first one is code enforcement officer position, that was a half-time position, we're recommending that be funded through the general fund, it was previously the tobacco grant, that's drying up as a G period. And it's something we're building with, with everything with fidgetated management, or fidgetation management, and other things, building code enforcement, that's really a high priority. We are recommending defying the additional administrative secretary until mid-year, something that we know is needed greatly in the development services department, however, because of priority and funding, we're recommending that that be deferred until early next year and then reevaluated at mid-year budget result. The temporary clerical, we, we basically, because we're not recommending that position, we're instead recommending $15,000 contractual temporary services as needed for that department. And then reclassifying the existing administrative secretary to a development technician, we're recommending that that be funded. Let's scroll down a little bit here. We're recommending the assistant city, or excuse me, assistant engineer position be funded. However, that actually, filling that position affected January 1st of next year, 2022, halfway through the year. And then the engineering specialist, that actually was an administrative specialist, and reviewing that, it was downgraded slightly to an engineering specialist, and that position is assumed to be filled December, excuse me, October 3rd. IT contractual services, that we, you may recall, we eliminated a position, the analyst position, and so we're just too close to the bone, and Cleve is recommending a $40,000 lineage for that. The reclassification of the assistant city manager, director of finance, is also a member of ours. The assistant finance director position, that was eliminated, based on priorities, it was just not a higher, highest priority right now. The pension contributions, we actually have funding from the general fund for that particular item, $47,000, because of the budget being tight, we're recommending holding off on that. Now, if we have a surplus going into next year at mid-year, perhaps we, or it's a hurry over from the previous year, we may want to consider using that. But for right now, we're not recommending the building that in the budget for that. However, the other funds, we are recommending that those funds be in budget for those. The, there was actually two additional police officers originally recommended, and at this time, we know there is a need. We tried to fund one, one additional police officer position, and we just couldn't do it, but we are recommending that that position be reevaluated after first of the year, based on, you know, our revenue sourcing, depending whether it's not. The police services assistant to a lead police services assistant, that's also being recommended. The police services assistant position, we're recommending not funding it at this, at this time, he was currently a vacancy, our senior, excuse me. We, we will reevaluate that after first of the year, we're recommending that. And then the dispatcher records technician, recommending not funding that. We currently have a senior dispatcher record position that's vacant, and so see how things go with that, and then reevaluate after first of the year. And then the police sergeant position, recommending not funding that one. So you can see over to the left, I'll try to scroll over here. The total for all funds is $287,000, when you take into consideration cost recovery for the engineering positions, it's $193,000 total. To your general fund, it's $226,000. Any questions? A lot of information that Cleve has to know.
Yeah, let me just add to that, in terms of those positions that Dave said that we want to look at at mid-year, I believe there were three of them. We do understand the importance of those, and we, as much as I've talked to some of you, want to see them look at. There are some things in terms of revenue that we think will be enhanced by mid-year that can help us move forward with those positions, and at least by mid-year. And if possible, if we see things improving earlier, we'll, we'll come back to you sooner than that to talk about those, so.
Thanks, Cleve. All right. Moving on to capital outlay.
Can, can we go, this is Michael.
Yeah.
I, I just want to put out to my colleagues, you know, I'm, I appreciate, I mean, appreciate the fiscal responsibility on all of these. I'd like to have a conversation when we're, we're through this, though, on the, the, the finance position. This is the, the executive city, city manager position that we ended up taking out. You know, we had talked about at the last budget hearing, really, the need to free up Dave a little bit more to help Cleve with the special projects, and understanding that there's only one Cleve and one Dave, and so that we were gonna try to build that help into the budget, so that as things come at us, which they invariably do, even whether it's good years or bad years, and the pandemics definitely takes us as a bad year, but even without that, there's always something new on the horizon, and there's never, I think, a good time to do something like this, but I think now is maybe one of the few times that we have that we can actually do something. So I just want to reserve that for a, a discussion item, because I think it needs, as much as I appreciate Dave and Cleve willing to take on more work without the help, I just think that as a body, we really gotta look at that again, because we're always adding things to their plates without the help that I think that they need, so I like to review that again, you know, afterward through Dave's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Saragosa. Moving into capital outlay. Here's some good news, so the development services department asked for two tablets for their voting software, and the police department, the chief, actually said, hey, we have tablets that were donated to us, you could use those. It was actually, that's what most of the books, I think, were, were used. So that's been covered, so we don't need to budget for that at all. And then looking at parks, the pickup truck, that's something that for right now, we're recommending that we defer that till mid-year. And I know some council members recommended perhaps looking at a used truck instead of a new truck. And I know some council members recommended perhaps looking at a used truck instead of a new truck. And that's something we can also take a look at and bring recommendations to you. The log rolling sounds a lot of fun, but right now we're just, money's not there. And perhaps, you know, Marshall Hospital or some other philanthropists would like to donate towards that. So it's kind of a cool program. And then public works, all but the tractor truck. Maybe recall, that's a $322,000 vehicle that we bought one in 2008. The state's telling us that the, it doesn't meet diesel requirement. So normally you get another five, 10 years out of it. But they're telling us a year from now, we're going to use it. So we do have an extra year. We're recommending that we pursue air quality management grant. Maybe if we have a surplus or a unbalanced to carry over, perhaps set aside maybe $50,000 or something like that for future purchase. And then look at leases as well as needed. So we'll come back with recommendations on that in the future. So the water lease defection and utility locating equipment, that's included still. Scrolling down, water need a reading handhelds, that's still included. These are Peter Ostergrans, unmarked police services vehicle. That, that remains and that's potentially for an additional decontractive. That's something that we're looking at. So total 238,000 across all funds, 136,000. Any questions? Capital outlay. All right. Moving on to our capital improvement program, or CIT. And I'm not going to go through all of these unless you have any questions. The only thing that's changed is the billing permit software. We're recommending that we perhaps, I don't yet are not good. I know we haven't got to ARPA yet, but that's something that we could consider use of ARPA. But right now, we're saying, let's remove it from the CIT. We're not ready yet anyway, because we're still searching for the software. And then town hall carpet, we're recommending deferring that. The city pool filter stand replacement, perhaps that's something that could be funded through the American Rescue Plan. But we're not making any firm recommendations at this time.
How crucial is that though? In case we don't, you know, you said you're looking into it. If we don't get it, how crucial is it that maybe we might need to consider?
Not sure if you can hear me? Sure. Okay. Could you restate the question?
I said, how crucial is that piece of equipment? And just in case we don't get the funding with the ARPA, how necessary is it that we need to really maybe consider taking it out of general fund or, you know, something like that?
Oh, are we, I'm talking about the truck.
I know, I'm talking about the filter.
Sand filter.
Oh, the sand filter.
It's only $16,000.
It is, yeah. It's been put off a couple of years.
Right. And I thought that you said it was pretty necessary.
Let me add to that. Councilmember Brawley, yes, it is extremely important and I think we need to get it done. The issue is, we're not going to get it done before this full season. Obviously, it's starting in a week, I think.
Correct.
But I think we should seriously look at doing it before next year's season. And we could consider that during our ARPA discussion that will finalize this summer. If, if we can't do it then, then we will probably come back and recommend that we look at it out of general fund.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So other than those adjustments, the total, everything else is the same. As we discussed on May 6th, you can see the general fund basically zeros out the budget for that. You can see all the funds there. And you can see the total is $3,670,000. And so most of that is through Measure L and Measure H. Any questions on the CIT? Okay, moving on to training. There's a lot of detail here. I'm not going to go through all of it. I just want to point out where we've made adjustments. So the city wide GIS training, that's something, again, when we talk about American Rescue Plan, something that potentially would make sense to, you could consider the use of ARPA, that item. That was just the training, so we also need to get the software. Community services, we're recommending not funding the Calhouny Parts and Recreation Society conference. It would be nice, but it's based on needs, recommending not doing that. Administration, the city managers, we're confident that Cleve has sacrificed that item. Appreciate that, it helped us balance our budget. And we need mixed, the collection law training. Our current collection agency has a lot of resources that can tap into for the next 12 months. And then, and then budgeting best practices, training, performance measures. We will continue to use best practices, but just train on that training. And then good news in the police department. The state has increased the post reimbursement rate to where really all these timings, 100%. No cost due, which is fantastic. I can't spend years to have done that. So very good news from our chief. And then looking at the bottom line, so scroll through here, start from the top. Green bars are summary of all of that. And you can see that the total is $56,790. And then we have $26,000 in post reimbursement on the right. And that leaves a net of $30,000, $37,000 cost. So that's what we're recommending. Any questions on training? Now we're going to show you the bottom line. This is a big document. Unlike a business that has one set of books, we have multiple books. And so we're going to show you each what we call funds. So the first on the far left is your general fund. And you can see that we're assuming 9.7 million dollars in revenue, 9.3 million dollars in expenditures. You see the transfers in and out, a net of negative 152,000. At that point again, as we showed you in college, that's like $252,000 surplus. And then the adjustments, we have $46,000 in just primarily sales tax adjustments, the ASL 133,000. The equipment, what we're recommending, possibly, we're not recommending, we're, we took that out for consideration of the American Rescue Plan, possibly running the end of that. The other capital outlay, the blue bar, 136,000, CIT nothing, conference training traveled, a net of 10,000. So $234,000 in adjustments, that leaves you $17,000. However, remember our GAAP debt has come US by about $13,000. So we adjusted that. So it's really about a $4,000 surplus at that point. And then the other funds, as you move to the right, are essentially balanced. There's a few areas. Measure L, the latest forecast is slightly higher. That, that $4,700 deficit will be zero all goose eggs. So other than we're done. Water Enterprise has a deficit of 38,000. However, Ms. Neves, City Engineers and I are going to work through the CIT budget and look at where we can reallocate perhaps some Measure L funding. We got that, actually see both Measure H and Measure L, our 300-type fund. Bring those, add to a balanced budget. So we'll do that in the next few weeks. So the, all the other funds you can see, there's surplus. So overall, $577,000 surplus. However, by the time we're done with our CIT, it could probably be a little less. So any questions? You can see at the top, the total for revenue, just over $25 million. Expenditures, 20.4. And then your transfers in and out, balanced of course, as they should. And then the adjustments, $4 million in adjustments before the $577,000. That is our proposal to you. Doesn't mean that's what you have to do. It's a proposal, you can keep how you want. And I just want to remind you, when you adopt the budget, it is a living document. It can be revised at any time throughout the year. So when things happen, you know, we use the time we didn't expect. And so you can use the budget revision process that your council will take action on. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I don't really have any questions. I'm just happy though, that some of the things that I think we really wanted that you're, and we didn't get, but you are going to address it midterm or even before, I think, kind of takes care of all my questions.
I've got a question. For some of the positions that we weren't able to fill with our, with this budget, I was curious if we could use any ARPA funds for them in terms of the additional police officer position?
Good question. So positions that were cut because of the pandemic, for example, engineering, those positions, you could use those funds. However, keep in mind that these funds are kind of one-time in nature.
Right.
We can use them through December 31st, 2024. After that, say if we do that, then you would have to find a funding source after that. So like, yeah, you could do that.
So if we establish something like a building or, I mean, then we've got to think about the maintenance because of this creation that we've.
Anything new, you're right.
Exactly.
It's not just what we build or buy.
That's what's so hard to.
Something new, especially.
Exactly.
And with that IT contract, because we, because that was a position we eliminated because of COVID. So could we use the ARPA to fund that?
Potentially, good.
That would be helpful a little bit. So which one, IT contract?
I would think so, but we can check.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go into this a little bit more when we get into the ARPA. But we are still, I've probably been on three or four webinars talking about ARPA guidelines.
Oh.
The American Rescue Plan guidelines, excuse me. And there's still, even as late as yesterday, the information we got was maybe. I think that's the best way to describe it, would you say, Dave?
Mm-hmm. I mean, maybe, yeah, still, you would think at this point, we would have firm answers.
So we, we still don't know for sure. The, the information was better that we recently got. There's some things that are a little more clear. I will also say that it's a little more restrictive than I was hoping maybe it was going to be. But the answer to those questions cannot be used, even the things that we proposed in this budget that we've talked about maybe using. Part of that maybe is that we still don't tell for sure if those would qualify. And you know, the, the answer yesterday was, well, we're trying to get questions answered from the Treasury Department, but they're still waiting. So we expect the funding to come in sometime in June. I'm guessing probably more towards the end of June. The state has 30 days once the funding comes in to get it to us. However, they can ask for an extension of 30 days for that. So there is that potential also. We could not, they could not tell us for sure yesterday whether or not the states have received that funding. But I think maybe they have. I know the, some of the, there's two groups of cities. One's called entitlement cities and non-entitlement cities. We're a non-entitlement city. Some of the entitlement cities, as my understanding, have started receiving that funding. The non-entitlement cities, they're still working on getting us the actual amount that we're going to receive. We understand there's been, there's an adjustment to that. And it was supposed to come out this week. We still have not seen that yet.
So would you explain to everybody what non-entitlement and what the two entitlements?
Well, entitlement cities, under the community development block grant program, there's what's called an entitlement city and it falls within a county. And it's generally your larger city, but not always. I've been in cities that have had it, not much bigger than we are, so it doesn't have to be. They're generally larger cities. Under that program, they automatically get CDVG, community development block grant funds, on an annual basis. Non-entitlement cities do not get that. They have to compete every year for, for that funding. But they can apply for more than what they may get on an annual basis. And so that's the trade-off. You can get a larger sum of money, but you may not get it every year. So the distribution for the American Rescue Plan funds is based on those categories that they've just established for non-entitlement and entitlement cities through the community development, federal community development block grant program. So the entitlement cities, again, which are generally the bigger cities, they have their number, there are no ones they're going to do. The non-entitlement cities, which are generally the smaller cities, do not have. We, we got a preliminary number from the legislature when it first came out. But apparently there were some cities that were left out of that. And so they've gone back to reevaluate it. And we're waiting to see our number now. Our initial number was 2.1 million. So that, that could change one way or the other, but we're just waiting to see where that's going to be.
So there again, it's the think guys, against us little guys, which I mentioned at the beginning of this meeting. It just seems to happen to us all the time, so.
Yep. We do have some good news. The visionary guidelines provide for calculating the revenue loss that we can count towards discretionary funds. And you may recall, we estimated approximately 500,000 or 600,000.
Right.
Based on their factor of 4.1%, we can actually demonstrate loss of 1.2 million.
Really?
Which means that of the 1, 2.1 million, we could potentially identify 1.2 that we have more flexibility of using this fund. So that's very good news to my knowledge.
Right.
So just, we're getting a little bit into the next item.
Sorry.
You want to continue that? I can, or if you want to.
I'd like to take public comment on my budget and maybe, I know that Michael had a discussion. I would like to continue that discussion on the budget and take public comment. But let's hear it. Michael, you were kind of leaning into a conversation about the.
Yes. Yeah. And then, and this went back to, I think, the original budget proposal from staff and what Cleve had and Dave had worked through. And essentially, it was, and I think it's the, well, I know it's the, the finance management position that would move to an assistant finance director, which would essentially, the idea was to free up Dave to help a little bit more Cleve, to give him projects that are what I'll call special project, things that kind of pop up and be able to handle those outside of his scope of what he's doing now anyways. And I thought, you know, on that position as well, that there's an opportunity maybe to make it revenue neutral as well, which is, you know, we're going to have three different tranches of dollars. So you're going to have the ARPA funds, you're going to have sort of, you have a state budget surplus. And then you're going to have competitive grant funding coming out of both of those going forward for probably quite some time of dollars that are out there. So whether that person could work on grants as well and to help our different department heads that are trying to both be proactive on writing grants as well as doing their day-to-day work. And I just think, you know, you know, things tend to fall on the wayside because we just don't have the time, Cleve doesn't have the time or Dave. But, and I'm not saying this one person would, you know, solve all of our issues or, you know, give them all the time in the world that they need. But I do think it's important that as we look beyond just the bare necessities of running government, that we try to have, build in a little capacity so that we can get beyond just sort of, you know, getting the, not the bare minimum, but just getting things done, but looking at how we can start looking at larger projects as well. You know, whether this is the, you know, police and fire, you know, whether this is, you know, how we look at our vegetation ordinance, I mean, just a lot of things that are important, I think, to all of us and important to staff in, in trying to come up with a way to, to make that work a little bit better. I really wanted to take a look at that position again. You know, maybe have Cleve and Dave go over their initial thoughts on it and then see if there's a way potentially to make that still work, even if it's set up maybe a lower position. I don't know if it could be classified as, you know, a different finance slot so that, you know, the price tag's less. But I thought it was worth a conversation at least for us to have. Those were my, sort of where I was thinking and trying to figure out how to, how to do that. Because I just think it's hugely important. Because I just think it's hugely important for us, as well as, you know, maybe even taking on some PIO duties as well so that we're, you know, more proactive when it comes to, you know, getting information out to the public and answering things as they come forward. Because again, there's limited time, I think, for, for Cleve to do that and even, and, and Dave as well.
So along those lines, I have a question for you. What, this, if this position, the finance, finance management position, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, it's actually called, it would be an assistant finance director. That's the title for it.
But I just want to make sure I wasn't saying it's correct.
Yeah, it's the second from the bottom on page one.
Okay.
Reclassifying the existing accountant position to a full-time assistant finance director. That's the one.
How much time would this free up if we were to somehow figure this out? What would that look like in terms of creating that time?
Uh, that's, that's for you, Dave.
Yeah, initially, it would be a climb. In other words, there's going to be cross-training and immersion. But I would say, I would say initially 20 to 30% and then ultimately 50 or 60%. Really depends on the skill set of the individual to take the position on.
So how did you, I'm sure you guys talked about this. How did you, how did you decide to cross this off? I mean, did you designate to other positions or how, what did you come, what was your solution?
I, I, I looked at the checkbook.
So nothing was passed on to anybody else or?
No, I have done a few things already in terms of, no, because this position is still there in terms of the part-time accountant, right, Dave?
That's correct.
That's, that's a position we still have and that will continue. This would be proposed to change that. So it doesn't require us to reduce anything we're doing. I will tell you, I've already given Dave a few things. He helps me out with parking now where I took all of that on before. But that, that's about it. I, I can't really give him anything more because he's every bit as busy as I am or if not more, so.
And there's nobody else in the office that can take?
Not, not really. The, the other issue that we, that I will say is, is the level of position that we need to take on what Dave, those things that Dave is doing.
In the financial part?
What we're talking is more high-level financial management duties so that Dave can be freed up. For example, I'll honestly say, you, you could take the budget process and give to somebody like an assistant finance director. And Dave could almost completely be removed from that over, just some, some oversight. That's just one example of something that could be done and there's others that we could-
General ledger, that's the big thing. You know, we have 40 funds managing that, cash flow analysis, just financial analysis. There's things that that person could take on that we still have.
Got a couple of questions on this. So just to make sure that I am fully understanding that it's a net increase of 76,000 to bring it from part-time to full-time?
Yeah, so what we did is we took, good question. So what we did is we took the cost, which is basically assumed as zero for the part-time position. Because that position is billable for the most part to projects that they invoice, Caltrans projects that engineering is working on. And then there's some other grants that they can build their time towards. But the full-time position, you do have the benefits, you know, the health and welfare benefits that are static regardless of what that person is doing. So you look at, you know, the productivity, billable time would be probably about 70%. But there's holidays, there's vacations, those kinds of things where it's not billable. And so you have additional costs. So when you net those three things, the net 76,000 is used to contribute.
So, so that's an increase from what we're already paying?
That's correct.
Okay. And then couldn't we spread that between the different funds? Because I would, I mean, I imagine that the finance, assistant finance director would be dealing with the parking fund and the sewage water.
There could be an opportunity, we'd have to do an analysis potentially.
Okay. And then it says that there's a cost recovery of 61,000.
That's correct.
So is this position really, it would really only be costing us 15,000? Is that?
The, the, the cost recovery is how you get to the 76 from the 137.
Okay.
It's already there, so.
I'm just doing Karen's mail.
Okay.
It's already, yeah, so.
Okay.
And that's basically for their time on projects, billing for projects, et cetera.
Okay, so that, so that would be coming from the other funds?
IP projects, water projects, sewer projects, P projects, et cetera, yeah.
All right. Okay, so it's, the 76 is the-
That's really the number.
The number.
Again, we could do a little bit more analysis as Dave mentioned. Could it be justified depending on what we have to do to look at some of that from some of our other funds, water, sewer, streets?
And this is, this is part-time?
No, this would be a full-time position.
It would be moving it from part-time?
What if we, what if we did two, two part-times? We could have certain projects be one person and, and then that we, we would still, then we would be eliminating, you know, some costs.
Yeah, it, it really, if we're going to do this-
I'm getting innovative.
This really should be a full-time position.
Yeah.
I, I will, I will state this carefully and how I said, but this could be an important part in succession planning.
Right.
And that's another thing that we're going to have to do.
Right.
Not that Dave's ever going to go away, he's always going to be here. Let him go.
And you're never going to-
But, but just, just to be aware that this could be a very important piece of our succession planning.
Well, and, and Cleve, that's an important, I think that's an important, you know, thing to say for the council and for the public as well. I mean, as we plan, you know, as we plan ahead and, you know, we never know who's going to go where or if opportunities come up for people. And I, you know, we could also look at the ARPA funds at least initially. We know it's not a long-term fix for the, the cost of this position, but could certainly mitigate the near-term cost as we look for ways to potentially, what's the right word, but, you know, find ways to maybe get to a cost-neutral position or at least mitigate some of those costs, you know, as we look at other options. But I, again, I still think that this is one that I, I'd really like to take a, a stronger look at because it just seems, and I hadn't even been thinking about the succession planning, but I think even just for the here and now, it, it's just so important, I think, to eventually get Dave freed up a little bit more. And, and please give to us one more point to, to think about.
So another question, the, the assistant engineer positions on here, those are hiring back, right? So those could be filled by ARPA?
That's correct.
Along with the IT?
Absolutely, they could. And the IT cost also could for a period of three years.
Right. But, you know, if, if this allows us to capture more grant revenue and it is cost-neutral, we would have three years to kind of get that established and find other funding sources for this.
And it's not creating another position, it's one we've already had, so.
I guess, I guess if I were to give you a recommendation on this, it would be to, let's work through the ARPA funds and then also maybe see where we're at in three months with other, some of these other revenues we've been talking about.
Yeah.
And put that in that category of a priority that you want to put up there with the other three that we've talked about and then you can determine it as, as part of that.
So maybe, maybe coming back at the, the end of the, the calendar year, halfway through the budget?
Yeah, yeah, or possibly even earlier. You know, depending on when we make the, more of the final decision, I'll say on the ARPA funds.
Yeah.
I think that's going to take us a little bit of time. We're not going to be ready obviously to do that today because we just don't have the answers yet. But I think that putting that together with some other things, maybe we can come up with a solution for it.
And I'll, I'll just mention colleagues as well. You know, we have another source that's not scored in this current budget and that's potential cannabis tax. You know, we don't know what that's going to be, but I, I do think we have another potential revenue stream that's out there that hopefully we'll see some scoring in maybe the fourth quarter this year, but certainly something that's going to be there going forward as well.
I would, as I look around the room through all the faces that are in the room right now, I know that each and every one of our departments have also are in need of positions to fill their, their, well, to fill the level of work that they're doing. I know that every physician is, every department head is doing double duty. And it's difficult to make a decision like this in that, in that light. Because I, I do know that there were requests for multiple positions. And, and that's not to say that this isn't needed. If it, if we could make it revenue, revenue neutral, that'd be great. Because then we, it's just, you know, this is one of those situations where you get, and, and believe me, I, I, when you, when you see your city manager answering the phones because nobody else is around and you see him dealing with the parking issues because there's nobody to deal with, with answering calls to deal with people that are complaining about their parking ticket. Well, you know, a good, a good city manager will do whatever it takes to get the job done. There's also higher levels of, of, of effort that he could be applying that would put his skills to more use. And it's, and we can say that about our, our city engineer who does our, 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 our what? Our content contact letter that goes out to the public so that, because she feels it's important to make sure that we're communicating with the public. And, you know, I can go through each department and talk about what they're doing in terms of covering for those positions that aren't there. And I'm not trying to discount this. I'm just pointing out things that maybe the public do not hear and see all the time because our staff does what it takes to get the job done. And that, and I'm very grateful for that. And people don't know that, and I think it's important to say. And, and yes, at, at the higher level could be better, at a higher level with Cleve and Dave working on issues that aren't parking tickets and complaints about buttholes or whatever else comes in on the front. They, could they be doing other things that benefit the city and produce, potentially provide savings or revenue or hopefully you won't be trying to spend more money with the excess time you have. But, but the, but the idea would be to get a return on that investment. I mean, it would have to get a return on the investment of that time if we were going to actually go down that road. And because everybody's needing a position and I do know, even, even the idea of getting a truck for, for, no, the public works means that, you know, they're not driving around town, dropping people off, doing job and driving around, picking them back up. And there's a whole nother opportunity to improve our efficiencies. I mean, just the simple, I mean, that's simple math. That's not talking about how long it takes to dig a hole or, but the, but the back system that works quicker. You can, you know, there's all sorts of things there that make a difference in terms of efficiencies and how we spend our money to the programs and things that we're turning down because we don't have the money for that. But the programs in themselves, you know, will make, give opportunities for efficiencies within the each department. And so it, it, you know, it's a heavy lift when we start considering, you know, this budget that's balanced, it brought forward with these, you know, everybody chipping in and taking a hit. I'm not saying I disagree with the idea that the name isn't needed. I just, I think all these things need to take right into consideration when we start going down this road. Because, you know, we, we go down this road and we can think about doing this and, and it sounds good and we kind of put our blinders on and we're thinking about this position. We're thinking about what it can do and these types of things. And I think it's, you know, we have to make a decision with the, with our blinders off and seeing the whole picture. And I, and I'm not saying you guys have your blinders on. I'm not going down that road. But we can, we can get a little tunnel vision and we start thinking, I'll get my optic about one particular position.
So Dennis, I, I'm going to suggest that we take Cleve's advice and what he just mentioned and, you know, agree to pass this just so we, we can get our budget passed and then, and then they'll be working on it. We'll be certainly in tune to it all and, you know, try to bring some of this, this stuff forth at a really, not wait till next year's budget, you know?
Well, it's also important to have continuity and especially, well, in every department actually, but in the city managers department, the continuity to help, you know, lead the group here too. So, you know, he's not going to work here forever, but he said he would work here until I was on the council. Was that what you said, Cleve?
Something like that.
You know, we have-
He promised Wendy that.
And that's something to think about too, is that, you know, we've got our, our city attorneys leading us and we know that we're going to have a pretty great increase in expense there. So, you know, we've-
That was included in the special.
It is included, but still, you know, so.
You know, we have the American Recovery Plan Act.
Right.
That's because that we can, that's in our next discussion. We have cannabis coming through that we can talk about.
I think that there's-
There's opportunities that I think it's probably appropriate to take this to a mid-year discussion. And I agree with you completely, Councilmember Saragosa, that this is definitely a priority. So with that said.
We have one.
Yes.
It is, you know, compared to last year's budget where there was like a strike-through line on almost every item, it is, this is really nice to see. And I am happy to see that we are able to hire quite a few new positions. That makes me really happy. One other position that I, I thought was really important but didn't make it in though was the administrative secretary for development services. Because I know that Pierre gets hit really hard with all of the new state regulations that comes with building and development. So that's also one that I think that we really should look at.
And that's also why we don't have things like our overlay for the RBOs.
Right.
That's just, it's a level of priority in, in daily tasks. And I know that I see every one of these people working late hours and such. I'm going to go ahead and for now, we take a break, not take a break, but we're going to go to a public comment and, and see, I know I saw a few hands up there. Please, I think you're running public comment.
Yeah, so we'll now take public comment on item, the budget item, 6.1 that we're on. Those of you that are on, I think, know the process. I'm seeing the attendees too have their hands raised this time. So please keep your comments to the budget item at this time. So Sue Rodman, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm impressed with the amount of work that you have all put into the budget. There is one position I think that's critical, and that's an enforcement officer. If we don't enforce the codes that we have in the city and we don't enforce our hazardous vegetation ordinance, we might as well not have those ordinances. You have to have enforcement in order to make them effective. So I'm a little disappointed to see that that's still just a half-time position. I think that really needs to be a full-time position and that if we were to appropriate, appropriately gather the fines from people who don't obey the ordinances, including the hazardous budget ordinance, that we could collect some money that would go toward that position. So I, I'd really like to see that one go as a full-time position. But I understand that the checkbook only goes so far. Mine only goes so far at my house too. So I'm, I'm supportive of what you're doing. That's the only thing that I would change in your budget, I think, is to go ahead and make that a full-time position. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Sue. Would it be all right if I answer that before we move on to this next one? Just quickly, for your information, that is a full-time position. It showed us part-time increase, but we already had it funded part-time. So total is one full-time position in our code enforcement department. So yes, we will have a full-time code enforcement officer under this proposed budget if it doesn't change, so. Kathy Lishman, go ahead.
Good evening, council. I'd like to thank Dennis for bringing back the idea of the big picture. It's not just about the people that are in that room tonight or what you're- It's not just about the people that are in that room tonight or what you're seeing. I think you have to be careful that the staff and the department heads and the council look like one big happy family when there's a lot of people out here with opinions. I think you have to be careful about focusing only on administration. I'm sure that there are needs in every department and I'm not sure how many employees that aren't department heads have opinions that you don't hear. You can't create a new position with a certain person in mind. And I feel badly that Dave is cut in half. It seems like you're cutting him in half and there may be a lot of other options. The succession part, I'm not sure about what's going on. And entitlements is entitlements based on the percentage of low income that you have. So anyway, in a comment to Patty about worried that they're always picking on us, I'm much happier I live here than in other areas that you might be thinking of. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Do you know what entitlements she was referring to?
I am assuming when I talked about, talked about entitlement cities and non-entitlement cities under the CDVG program. And to my, that does not have anything to do with low income qualifications. It's simply that a.
Low income qualifications.
Well, she, she talked about, does it, I think that's what she said, something related to that. Is it based on the number, percentage of low income? Isn't that what she said? And I, I don't think that is. I, I actually think any county can apply, it's up to the county to apply to be an entitlement county. And then as long as the cities join in with that, you can be, you can be an entitlement city within that.
Gotcha. Okay. Any, so, so what we have is a recommended budget that we're not going to take any action on. It's more of a Q and A opportunity and to dig into any other areas. Is there, Michael, are you still with us there? Yeah. There's nobody else there.
I am still here. I just had a unstable internet, so I turned off my, my camera.
Okay, did you have any other questions, Michael?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, just wanted to double check. Anybody else here have any question on this agenda item?
No, but I would like to make a, a comment regarding what Kathy said about my comment about, and I do agree. I would much rather live in a small town. I think I have the whole league of cities. Our, our particular category that we fit in is small cities agreeing with me that we do, we really have to fight for our share of everything. And it's always been a bone of contention that, you know, we need a little bit more.
Yes. We're not coming out unfortunately. So I, I want to take this opportunity and I'll say it again later on when there's probably, it might be more people, who knows? People don't usually turn, tune into these exciting meetings like this.
Unfortunately.
To thank staff because I know that each and every one of you took big hits to make this happen. You took, you got rid of your wants and needs and, and some, you know, you got, you had to get down and dirty and a little scrappy to make this work. And, you know, from every department, I, I know that you have much needed staffing and equipment needs that went unmet again this year. And I just want to express my appreciation to what you guys are doing to make this city continue to operate so well. And you do it with such grace and you do it quietly. And I just want to express my appreciation for that. All right, I'm choked up here thinking about you guys. So moving on, item number six point two, review guidance, guidelines and provide staff with recommendations regarding the American Recovery Plan Act.
All right, thank you, Mayor Council. We, we've kind of broken into this already due to some necessity during the budget discussion. But as you know, the, the American Rescue Plan was adopted back in March, actually on March 11. And it basically provides $65 billion for cities nationwide. In the initial preliminary estimate that was provided to us, we were given a number of $2.1 million that would be allocated to the city of Placerville. So out of comparison, I'll just throw out, El Dorado County is stated slated to get $37 million under their. So it's basically based on population. If you start running the numbers and look at those, you'll see that's the basic distribution. Recently, it's been noted that there will be new estimates that will be coming out for what I referred to previously as non-entitlement cities, which we are. We are still waiting for those estimates as late as yesterday when we were on a phone call with the League of Califor, or they want to go by California Cities now. And the National League of Cities, they both stated that they expected those to be out this week, but we still have not seen those as of today. So I guess they've got one more day before this week is done. The, the program recently, actually on May 10th, so a little over a week ago, they released what they call the interim guidelines for the use of funds, which is a 151-page document to try and weed through and figure out what is and what isn't and what's, what's allowed. But staff started putting together some things between Dave and I, we worked on, you know, tried to put together some guidelines to start with. And then we looked at, what I included in your report here today are the, kind of the, some broad categories that they have outlined that are eligible for funding. So just quickly, the guidelines we put together, and, and these are from other things that we've learned from other agencies throughout the state and throughout the nation of what they're doing. But so just kind of asking some of these questions, does the proposed program or improvement directly affect the city residents and/or businesses? So that our community in, in general? Does the proposed program or improvement provide long-term investment into the community to benefit current and future generations? That is one that we have heard a lot about, Dave and I both, and talking about what could we do that doesn't help us just for the next three years, but helps us going out farther? And we can talk about some of those as we get into this a little bit more. Maximize the use of the funds. Are there other sources that can be obtained such as federal competitive funding? Local funds should only be used on projects for which other federal or state funds are not available or to leverage those funds. I think I've mentioned previously, I'll bring up the example of broadband. That's one that I've been very strong on, as you know, and try to promote. The governor's proposed budget that was just released has $7 billion in it for broadband. It's specifically currently outlined to kind of is for the middle mile, they call it. But still, that, that's a big sum of money for California for broadband. In this American Rescue Plan, besides the money that's coming directly to us, the budget, the plan included $10 billion nationwide for broadband. I am still watching, but I have not seen any guidelines on how that is going to come out, what it's going to be used for. In addition to that, recently, the infrastructure plan that our president has been proposing, the President of the United States, President Biden, includes $100 billion for broadband nationwide. So you can see there is a huge focus on broadband right now. And I think it's because everybody's recognizing the need, the, the recent pandemic has emphasized that need. And so I think that's an example of something that, that we need to look at possibly for our individual funds, but also these competitive funds that are going to be available and how can we be prepared and take advantage of those? Next one, there, these are one-time funds. So we want to be careful that they shouldn't be used for ongoing programs unless we know that we're going to be able to, you know, adjust for those in the future. Otherwise, we end up canceling that program maybe three years down the road. I should probably add that yesterday on the meeting we were at, they mentioned that there's been a slight change. It, it appears that we have to have the obligate, the funds obligated by 2024, by the end of 2024. We have a couple more years of sound, but what they're saying now is till 2026 to actually spend the money. But we have to have it obligated by 2024. But it only stretches so far too. So that, that's the other factor in there. And then the last thing is the use of the funding does not supplant existing funding. Now, it could, but we don't recommend we do that unless there's a real good reason for it. Again, these are for, because they're not ongoing funds, they're one-time funds, it, it probably does not make sense to look at that that way. So moving down to the, the ARPA guidelines, these are some ca, the categories that are in the, the bill. Public health and economic impacts, category designed to address impact directly related to the pandemic, such as mitigation measures to stop or prevent the pandemic. I can tell you, if you look at the back of the room, we don't need to buy any more masks or sanitizer. We're good there. So, but anyway, that, that's a simple example. There, there's other things that could be done related to that, that category. Responding to negative impacts. This includes assistance to the unemployed workers, assistance to households, expenses to improve efficacy of programs, assistance to small businesses or nonprofits, rehiring of local government staff, aid to impacted industries. That's the one we talked about, possibly using some funding to rehire some of the positions that we lost during the, during the pandemic. Investment in housing and neighborhoods and included in that is homeless assistance are eligible costs under the plan. Educational disparities, programs to address education issues as a result of the pandemic. You can use your own imagination what that could be.
Computers.
Could be computers to assist schoolchildren. So that's one example. There are tablets, whatever.
Along those lines, the, the schools receive money also, right?
I believe so. I'm not sure. Do you know, Dave?
I thought that was one of the big issues that, that, you know, the schools were holding out. I'm curious because if we start thinking, if we start going down that road of schools, I'd like to know.
They can get their own.
Where they're at.
Right. I, I have the same concern, but that's something we can look into further.
And hopefully by next school year, people won't be needing to buy computers to do at home.
Premium pay to essential workers. There's, there's a, a program in there where they could be paid additional funds even going back to the original date till the start of the pandemic. You could go back and calculate hours and, and pay them a premium for those hours that they worked during the pandemic. Recovery of lost revenue, Dave referred to that. And there is a calculation in the new guidelines that he's followed. That's how he came up with the potentially 1.2 million that could be revenue recovery that we could justify. One point we want to make on that, and I think Dave and I are on the same lines here, is that we can, we can recover that funding and put it into our general fund. However, it still has to be spent within that 2024, 2024 obligation. So we can't just bank it in our general fund forever.
I have a question on that, Cleve. Have we, have we recovered any COVID-19 or pandemic dollars? I thought, I wanted to say we had done some of that before, but would this be prospectively or is this since the beginning?
Yeah, you're talking about for the cost like, like for costs that we had during the pandemic?
Right.
Yes, and Dave, you can answer that, but we have, we have claims with FEMA.
We do. We have approximately $150,000 in claims as well as the TERRS Act. We received $132,000 that we funded a police officer position for about nine months. And we have the trash bin that we paid for and unemployment, about 50% of our unemployment benefit during that time.
Got it. So this is, would be on top of all those then?
Yeah, we couldn't re, re-spend those, cover those, but because we already have, but yes.
Yeah. Got it. Okay, thank you.
And then the last one is investments in, in infrastructure. What we learned yesterday on our meeting that we were at is that if it, it's only projects that are specifically spelled out, and in this case, those include water, sewer and broadband are infrastructure projects that are qualifying. Why they left out sewer, I'm not sure. There is a big focus on, it talks about being in project, project to put you in compliance with the Clean Water Act. And I'd look at Rebecca and Nick if we need to talk more about that. But that's a law of the Clean Water Act and, and so that we have to comply with. And so if there's projects that help us get there, I think that's why water was specifically spelled out in here.
That would be something like the lead pipe replacement program that we have?
Correct. Correct. So that's what information we have so far. As you know, I did, if you want to read the 151 pages, I gave you a link to that. You're welcome to do that. I've gone through it at least two or three times now to try and interpret it. It's a little difficult. There is a process they talked about yesterday and there's some, there's some questions you answer for a project. And if it doesn't, if you can't see where it's specifically spelled out in here, then you can go through this process of answering these questions. And if your project says yes to these questions, then potentially it is qualifying. So there, there is that process, even though it may not clearly be spelled out here. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Council, for discussion.
Boy, this is, this, you know, this is going to be interesting. Everybody wants a piece of this pie. And when, at the end of the day, when we figure out how the ties all split up, somebody's not going to be happy. Or maybe nobody will. But so I look forward to this session. I think we have to keep an open mind and keep an open, the communication and, you know, be open to hearing all the different perspectives we have on this. Cause I'm sure the community is, and I, I know I've had a lot of, a lot of, I've had a few emails. I've had some conversations with people and there's, everybody has a really good idea. Yes, sir.
You, you just reminded me, I have put before you two comments that we received, one from Ruth Michelson and one from Nicole Goffberg. I think you received those prior, but I want to make sure you, everybody knew that we gave those to you, you have those too.
And so I, I, I'm, I'm looking forward to the discussion I'm hearing. And, and I'm sure, I don't know if we have a mechanism for receiving input other than just city council meetings. I don't know if we can create a mechanism for that. Is that a thing?
We could depend on, just through email. We, we could do a survey if, if you would like us to look at something like that, to see what categories. Surveys are a little bit difficult to get response on.
Right.
I know.
And I think all familiar decisions can come down to our, you know, pie votes, but at the same time, I think it'd be great to hear.
I, I think also that depend on whether it's another reg, at your regular meeting or, you know, we could always do a special meeting like this again. Once we get a little bit more solidified on where we want to go and, and have some, some more specific proposals maybe.
Right.
Couple of questions. With those FEMA funds, so we spent the money on masks and sanitizer or whatnot, and then we get reimbursed that fund back to the general, the, the general account and then we can use, it's open, we can use it for whatever. It's not like grant money that has to be used for something, right?
Well, it would offset the cost that we received, so.
So we've already spent that cost, but now it's our money to do with what we want?
Correct.
Okay. And then for the approximately $1 million in revenue recovery that we could potentially get back, that can be used for anything, right?
That is our understanding that we're, we, we want to get clarification on that piece, but that's our understanding. It's interesting that, yeah, it's a recovered funding that we had to spend out of our general fund to get past the, the pandemic. My thought always was, oh, great, we can restore our reserves where we wanted them to be. But then I'm told that, no, we have to spend that money. They want it spent, so it doesn't.
But they don't care where we spend it.
That's our understanding. We still need to get that clarification.
So not saying we should do this with that money, but we could say, all right, go get everything that you wanted in the original.
I was going to say.
You, you could. As long as it's one-time cost, I, I would say you could do that.
Filter and, you know.
Correct.
Okay. And then there was a section on climate change and resiliency. Would vegetation management projects, you know, fall under that category?
I believe potentially vegetation management, we can find a way that it will qualify. One way or the other, maybe. One way or the other, maybe even through the, you know, what, the recovery fund, the revenue recovery fund. That's, that's one that my staff has on our list. We were interested in. But again, it's one of those items too, that the funding that we applied for, we also, or that we looked at potentially using, we also recently applied for grants. So if we get the grant, it may not be necessary for this, so.
Okay. And then one other question, is there a, like, a process in place for coordinating with the county? Because there's some, you know, I mean, Health and Human Services is kind of responsible for the whole homelessness area. So, and, you know, there's talk about giving grants to small businesses or individuals. It doesn't really make sense for the city and the county to be pursuing those on their own. It would make more sense for there to be some collaboration with, you know.
So along those lines, as far as the small business grant, I can talk to that. I first still participated in a county, it's called the Business Working Group. We had a meeting yesterday, and we talked about various options. They are pursuing potentially a grant program for small business. There has been interest to kind of talk about maybe doing it as a more specific item than just generally granting them the money. But the details haven't come out on that. The county is no farther along in this than we are currently. They're trying to get their budget passed first, and then they're going to address, bring this to the table. So that example is there. I will tell you, I have a meeting next week. Chief Ren and I have a meeting next week with County Health and Human Services regarding homelessness. And we do work fairly closely with them on that. So, yeah, there's the opportunity there depending on what happens with funding on their end.
So one of the things that I was contemplating, thinking about this is, can we use this for, what do you call that? Would we pay a portion of it? Why can't I think of it?
Matching fund?
Matching fund, thank you. Is this, you know, I guess that the project meets the requirements for this. It would be, it might be, well, it's matching funds for a vehicle or a position that we did not get because of the pandemic or different opportunities, you know. It would seem like having some reserve. Can we also do this where it's loaned money or it's money that goes out and then it's reimbursed to us?
I had that question too, and I don't have an answer for that yet. And the question comes in, if you do it to create some sort of loan program, when the money comes back in, what are the options for that money? Right. And I don't, I thought of that, but I don't have an answer for that yet.
All right.
I want to mention quickly, I'm trying to remember if we covered this during the budget part, but the two other things that we are looking at that was in your budget to spend these funds for. One is for the purchase of two patrol cars. I think we mentioned that, didn't we? And that, the reason for that is, though we feel pretty strongly that's an eligible purchase, is because we have those slated in our budget last year. And due to the pandemic and the loss of revenue, we canceled it. Which, under our schedule, we had programmed to purchase two vehicles every year. That puts us purchasing four this year. So we have out of your general fund budget that you just reviewed to purchase two of those vehicles. And we would propose, if you want to, we would recommend that we consider two more would come out of ARPA funds when we get that established. So that would give you a total that keeps, keeps those total number of vehicles up to the status where we need them.
Bring us up to date.
Yes, correctly. The other one is our computer replacement program. Recall that last year, or two years ago, we started that. I think last year was the second year of it. We were all, yay, we've got it going, and here we go, we can now do this. And then the pandemic hit, and we canceled it. So that is somewhere around $45,000 or $50,000, I believe, Dave, that we also would propose to one-time, essentially a one-time cost. $54,000, thank you, that would come out. We're recommending come out of ARPA funds. It's not programmed in your general fund budget right now. So if you want that to happen, it's either ARPA funds or we go back and then look at it through the general fund for that one.
All right. Michael, you're out there. Do you have any more questions or comments?
Yes. I think, you know, one thing to also take into account is, not, the vice mayor brought up a good point in terms of, you know, how we can collaborate with the county. There's going to be a ton of state dollars out there as well and federal dollars that, you know, as the year rolls on, we're going to be competitive for, whether it's competitive grants or formulaic. The state basically put a shell budget in place on the stimulus dollars. I mean, no one really knows how those are going to get disseminated at this point, except for the categories that they're in. But, you know, to the point of leveraging those dollars as well, I do think there's going to be opportunities out there for us that aren't crystal right now. And I think will become a little bit clearer as we see guidelines come out from feds and the state, and then how we can work with Eldorado County on some of those that, you know, might work for both of us, like homelessness or fire prevention, things like that. So not so much a question, but just I wanted to make that comment because this isn't going to be something that we are going to know by the time we pass our budget. It's going to be something we have to monitor as we go forward, even the state budget. I mean, you're going to see the trailer bills that go through September because we just don't know how that money is going to be spent at this time. So it's going to be a little bit of a different animal this time around as well. So I just think we have to constantly monitor that as we go forward and see where our opportunities are going to be. Even if we come to some idea of, you know, what we kind of want to spend the money on or how, I think there'll be definite ways to leverage those as we go forward. And thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Further comments here before I go to public comment?
I tend to agree with Michael. I'm getting a feeling just from listening to Cleve that we really and truly don't know anything. I think is what it boils down to. And, you know, why even, well, I mean, get the ideas, but really, we can't really mail anything down or kind of even talk about it because everything is kind of iffy.
We could try to prioritize, you know, maybe just to help give them direction as they kind of mold that.
And build a framework for the discussion.
Well, and the other thing that we are, if there are projects out there that are priorities for you, we would like to get those so that we can start putting costs to those. We can start that process and so that when we do get.
Except that you don't know whether it's going to be covered or not.
That's right, but we can still put the costs together. And so that we're prepared when, to come back and say, you want to do projects one through 10, this is what, how we would fit those into the money that we have. So, yeah, if there's projects you see that you feel strongly about, we would like to, you know, hear about those so that we can start putting numbers, work with you to put those numbers together, so.
All right. All right. Now we're going to go ahead and open it up for a public comment.
All right, now taking public comment on item 6.2, related to the American Recovery Plan Act funding. And we'll start with Sue Rodman. Go ahead, Sue.
Good evening again. I was looking at that document that you were looking at, and it says water, sewer, and broadband. Is that not correct? And if it does say water, sewer, and broadband, what about our water treatment plant that was damaged several years ago when we had the high water problem? And it still has things that need to be done and things that need to be done long-term maintenance and investments. And it seems to me like this would be a good time to get ahead of the game on that one. Because that one, you can't tear up all the streets and water lines at once in the city. And Measure H and Measure L are working in a pretty regulated way to get those parts accomplished. But that sewer treatment plant takes a big hit out of Measure H every single year, not only for the debt servicing, but for the maintenance costs and the updating and replacement of things that were damaged. So I'd like to see us look at some of this money as being able to be used. And it certainly would be a lot longer life than three years. These are long-term investments that we could make that would be beneficial and would free up then Measure H and Measure L money to do the projects that we need to do on the water lines and the sewer lines. And so that would be a thing I think we should consider, especially if sewer really is in there. So that, and I think that broadband is a very good investment. The shortage of it has been a problem for the schoolchildren all along. That's been part of the problem with remote learning, is that if you can't connect, you can't do your remote learn. So those are the two things where I think we should really put some effort in. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
If I could quickly just clarify, you're correct, sewer is included. The streets is the one that is not included in, as far as infrastructure, which some questions came out about that, why not, why not streets? But it is not. So it's water, sewer, and broadband, my mistake on that, so I apologize.
Thank you.
Kathy Dishman, go ahead.
Good evening again. First of all, I have to say that Dave's and Cleve's heads are cut off in the picture that I see. So that could be adjusted for next time. And I'm assuming this is only the beginning of the discussion and coordinated with Eldorado County is really important. I don't really understand because those guidelines are for all over the country and which categories really pertain to us in our situation. What is the broadband situation in the city of Placerville? I'm not sure that it's the same as the difficulties they have out in the county. Also, school districts across the country are all funded differently. I actually worked in a school district that was the city school district. So one size doesn't really fit all in these guidelines. And as far as COVID things, issues, the county is really doing that. And, you know, how could we help to get vaccines out to people that haven't been able to get them? And I do want to say that the emails that you get and the people who call you or those of us that speak in the meeting, at the meetings, are not the only people in Placerville. And if there's a way to really reach out to know what the community needs are, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Try it a little slow. Let's go to Ruth Michelson. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. You can hear me all right?
We can.
Yes? Okay, great. I'm so glad you actually discussed both these items tonight, the budget and then this money, this recovery money. I like seeing the connection. I will discuss the second one. I mean, I can see through the budget discussion that.
Sorry, I cut her off somehow.
Sorry, Ruth, we'll get you back here in just a second.
Are you there, Ruth?
Okay, I'm unmuted again.
Sorry, Ruth.
So should I wind up all over again? How much did you hear, anything? Oh, boy. Okay, I'll start again. I'm glad that you had both of the discussions tonight about the budget and this recovery money because I can put into perspective how you have a shortfall in your budget and you're needing to take shortcuts and make sacrifices. And I can see the temptation and the actual need to use this $2.1 million towards things that the city actually does need, police cars, fixing the treatment plant and these types of things. And I don't doubt that those would be good uses of the money. I would just ask that simultaneously, you think of setting aside some of the money close to the ground, close to the people, close to those who are most impacted. You've read the letter, I hope that I sent. And some of these issues have been brought up, you know, broadband isn't just for people who have to remote learn, but kids, a big part of their homework today is doing research online. We don't have encyclopedias anymore, you know. You and I grew up with encyclopedias, but kids need, you know, computers to find out the most recent information about things. And if they don't have a computer at home, they're really at a disadvantage. So I'm glad you're thinking of broadband for kids. And I can't remember the other one that you touched on. But you can see the theme of what I've written and the people that I represent. We really think of those are the who are the hardest hit. And close to the ground, kind of one-on-one kind of assistance. I know that everything you're suggesting will indirectly help all. I mean, obviously sewers and police cars keep us safe and that type of thing. But if you could please balance that with some of these low-tech items as well. I know many of us would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. And it looks like that is it for public comment. So I want to bring, close to public comment, bring it back for further discussion. Along Ruth's comments about being balanced, I know that we are, we will be exploring and looking for balance through this whole process. I get that there's needs in a variety of different areas. And I know I will encourage that, I'm sure everybody else will.
So she mentioned banking it, but I, according to Cleve, we can't? I mean, it has to be specific and spent.
I don't think she meant indefinitely, but, you know, we have four, we have till 2004 to.
Just for a short time.
To allocate it and then.
Is that allowed, do you think? To set aside money?
Well, only through 2026, but again, you have to obligate it by 2024. So you have to say it's going to be used for this purpose. And I'm not sure that after 2024 you could change that. You would have to spend it for that purpose after 2024, between 2024 and 2026. Mayor, if you'd like, we wanted to hear your comments first, but staff has prepared a list of things that we think are category priorities that we'd like you to consider. You may not like them, and that's fine, but I'd like to pass these out. There's a couple of them that are, well, maybe only one, but there's one on here that's kind of unique that we came up with. And we've talked about it at our Economic Advisory Committee meeting on Friday, and so I'll let you look at those quickly. And then if you want, want any of our staff to talk about any of them, we can.
Hey, Cleve, is it possible to put one up on the screen? Like, I can see.
Can you read that?
Thanks, Mayor. My contacts are good, but not that good.
Give us just a minute and we'll see if we can do that.
No problem.
I think you overspent already.
We need five million more.
While Dave's trying to make this work and send it, so you could also send it to Mike too. I wanted, if I can, introduce you to one program that I've thought is kind of unique and interesting. It's number 16 on here. It's called Relief Across Downtown, a RAD program. It's called a RAD card. And basically what that is, is we would put, and I proposed a number here, but there needs to be some more research on how much that is. I proposed $100,000. This is a program that was started by the city of Modesto. And they've done it, they've had it in place for about a year now, off and on. So what it is. So what it is, is you take, you download an app on your phone that is a, it's basically a card, and you, you buy mon, you purchase money on it. So, and the way the program works is you, you buy $25, you put $25 of your own money in it. And then this program matches that. So your $25 becomes $50. Then you can take that into any store that signs up for the program, and you can spend that money from your phone in that store. So you go to the restaurant to eat, you put $50 on it, let's say, and they match it 50. You've now got $100 to go out to dinner or whatever you're doing. You go in the store, when you leave, you show them your, your phone with the app. It's actually a QR code, so they have to have the ability to scan that QR code. And then that's how you pay for it. So it's something that I kind of like because, as we mentioned, it is on the ground. It gives money to our consumers. It also gets money back to our businesses. It doesn't cost the businesses anything, by the way, to do it. You can do, they say you can do it as a gift card, so you could gift it to somebody. If you have a friend, you want to give them a birthday gift, you give them a $50 card on here. You pay 25 and they get 50 or something like that. We, we've been looking at, this is one of those programs I've been discussing with the county. We discovered it, I asked the county if they might be interested. We participated in the follow-up this week, their economic development person and I about it. So just to kind of be a unique program, something a little bit different. The other program that, that we proposed in this working group was the potential to consider a employee hiring bonus program. There's been a lot of talk, you've probably heard in the news, and I've heard it even here locally, about the difficulties that businesses are having hiring employees. There's been discussion about the part of the, part of the reason for that might be because the unemployment benefits are so lucrative that they don't see a need to come back. So perhaps providing a hiring bonus to a business that needed to hire employees, and we'd probably look at small businesses, there'd probably be some sort of limit on that. But we don't have the details on that. That's a second program I didn't put on here, but we did discuss with our county partners. And I thought that was kind of unique. You guys may be more in tune with that if you've talked to businesses downtown, what their issues are and how difficult it may be to hire employees. But that was another thought that, that we came up with that was an idea that we might consider. So those two, the rest of these, I think, are pretty straightforward. But I want to make sure that I outlined those two specific, they're a little bit different, so.
So I've got a question on here about number eight. So we have a courtyard revitalization in the CIT plan for $75,000. Eight hundred thousand.
So that, the, that is simply the seed money, the $75,000. If we were to completely do it the way we would like to have our corporation yard, it is, and that's a very preliminary number, the 800,000. But that's a number that Rebecca and Nick developed.
And they're worth it.
They, they are worth it. It was just a huge jump.
I had a question on number five. I, this was something I was going to throw out to the group anyways on the vegetation management. But I thought, you know, even if it was like, say, 100,000, but to have some kind of fund that for our most, like our real safety net residents that couldn't actually get their yards done for some reason, that, that we have some, a fund for them to maybe access. And I don't know how that would be, or like, you know, some percent of the poverty line. Because obviously, I don't want to fund people that can do this themselves and should be doing it themselves. But we do know that there are households, fixed income, whatever it might be, that maybe we, we put some dollars towards, you know, a, a, a program. And I didn't know, Cleve, if that was just our own city property that you had included in that or if there was more of a community-type program in that as well.
This, this particular one, Councilor Sargosa, was for city properties. However, I will note, we mentioned the grant application that was turned in this last Monday by Mr. Zeller, completed that for us. We included $100,000 in there for just that type of a grant program to help those that are low-income who could not afford to, or for whatever other reasons, you know, couldn't afford to clean up their property. So we do have that program outlined in there. We put a limit of $2,500 of grant funds in there, but that's not a bad amount to, to get some decent work done on, on your property. So the answer is, on this one, what we had envisioned was for city properties. But in that grant that we applied for from the state, included both this amount for city properties plus that other grant program for private properties.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Did you have something?
Can you tell? So there's some great things on here. I kind of had just my first stab at this. If I, if I had full control over this, just going off of reflex, I would say of like $500,000 for city needs, $500,000 for veg management, $500,000 to purchase a property or do some investment in the property for the homeless, and the other $500,000 in loan programs or other programs for either people that need help as a result of COVID or businesses that need help as a result of COVID. I like the RAD program. I think it would also be cool to have like a people's loan program that could be used for, you know, childcare expenses, education, starting a small business, veg management, you know, just kind of a flexible loan program that was zero interest or really low interest for the people of Placerville.
I was looking, if we cut two, nine, and 10, we could do all of the rest and have a little left over. There's a lot of those things that were on my list.
What's, what's that total?
It's like 1.8.
I think some of these things, you know, broadband, I think, is a really good, is really important, but I also think that there's going to be other funding sources for it.
Exactly.
You know, and, and some of the people that wrote in, they had some great ideas too, in terms of like computers. But again, I think that there's going to be lots of other funding sources that cover those types of investments, computers for individuals.
Well, like the Sierra School gets, you know, some of the taxes that, I mean, we passed that one that they are getting their, you know, and I think the high school's doing pretty well, but I'm not real sure on that.
Do you have anything to throw out there, Patty? You know, as I doodled around with this, I thought about the veg management, I thought about matching funds. You know, I would, I would consider what the county's putting in for homeless or whatever else has going and kind of coordinate with them potentially in terms of matching funds or proportional. Because I don't want to necessarily invest in property that's only in the city. It could be a property that we invest in with the county together because I know that our dollars with the county will go further.
What's the thing? The governor made an announcement about putting more money into there, so there might be more grant opportunities.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, and Michael did mention it, that there's a lot of money out there that's coming down for those purposes. I, I quite, and maybe this sounds selfish, but I think we ought to contain it to a city in our needs, you know, because we've got a lot of them, as was told in our budget tonight. And I, like I say, I'm being selfish, but I think we ought to really consider a lot of those issues.
Well, and you look at the word recovery, you know, a lot of this helps us kind of recover.
I'm sorry, Jackie, I can't hear.
I said, you know, and if you really think about it, when it says recovery act, a lot of these items are helping us recover.
Yeah, I'll just mention, so there was the governor and his mayor revise, I think has $10 billion in investment for, for homeless. It equates to about 65,000 rooms is what they're predicting over a certain, I forget the timeline to have those 65,000 rooms come online. But there is a considerable investment on, on the homeless side, which I think would probably be both a mixture of programmatic as well as competitive funds. So there's definitely some opportunities there. And then in terms of the schools, there's 123 billion in the ARPA funds for, for schools. So I, you know, I, I certainly get that part, but I do think they're getting their, their funding as well. And, you know, we kind of have to concentrate on our, you know, on our city needs outside of the school systems, outside of maybe broadband, which, you know, would cover both of those things.
All right. And you know, one of the things that I'd like to do is, since we have a new document here, and I see a hand up, I wouldn't mind opening this back up. But before I do that, please, was this generated at basically a staff level meeting?
It was, yeah.
So, you know, go around, I'm sure everybody has their idea of which department they would like to be funded first.
I, I, I think our main purpose in doing this was just to create, to help create the discussion of what, what the potential was. So we're, we're open for whatever you'd like to do.
I got you. All right. Thank you very much. I see Sue Robinson's hand up. If anybody else is listening that would like to comment on this at this time, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment on this, just, just on this particular document that we're working on here. I'm sure you'll throw something else in, but give it a shot.
Sue Rodman, go ahead.
Okay, I'm looking at this, this document, and what I see is some things I think would be very appropriate, especially the veg management and community fire safety. We really do need to do that in order to have a city for a long term and not end up like my paradise did. The Canal Street utilities and paving, that's going to get, that's going to happen anyway eventually. But the city pool filter sand replacement, and again, the bringing our water treatment plant up to date. The sewer, the finance, the, let's see, the patrol vehicles, looks like a very good idea for me, to me, anyway. And so I'm looking, this looks like a pretty good list. There are some things I would not support. The automated water meters, we're getting those anyway as we go through our water lines and update the service meters for all the water lines in the city. So those, to go through and do a million-dollar project just to update water meters, I don't see as, as a really priority use of this money. But most of the rest of these, I think, are okay. And like I said, I would put my, my, the public safety building design, where we really do need to do something about that, and that's a long-term project. So it's an appropriate use of this money as far as infrastructure goes, that's a good one. So those are the things, and I would not, public works, two-way radios, we could get those some other way. So it seems to me like the big, the big ticket items would be to get our city so that it's fire-safe finally and get this hazardous veg under control, not only in the city, but through all of the, all of our residents. The corporation yard revitalization, that's been on the back burner for a long time. That would be a good one. So I think there's some things that really rise to the top like cream and would be the, the best things to do with our money if we get some and how much we get. And so those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Julie Robinson, go ahead.
Hi there, guys. I was at work today and I met a lady who couldn't afford her medication, so had to get readmitted to the hospital, and we see that quite a bit. And so, I don't know, maybe in that hardship fund, if there was something like that. That's my, yeah, but I like that idea of public loans. Thank you, it's an exciting conversation.
Thank you, Julie. Right, see no other hand. We'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back for the, for the council for further discussion. I suppose we can sit here and doodle this all night long. And I know that we're going to have additional meetings, we're going to have public meetings. I think it's important to throw out, you know, kind of just that, really just kind of, I don't know what to call it. Big ideas, interesting ideas, different ideas, something, of course, I'll take home and think about for our community if they re-listen to this and think about. And I know we've hit on quite a few, so I'm not expecting a whole barrage of new ideas here. But Michael, did you have anything else there?
No, I don't think so. I mean, I think this is a great start, and I really want to thank Dave and Cleve and the rest of the staff, you know, for putting, for helping us frame the conversation. I think it's great, and, you know, I'm looking forward to more discussion and, you know, hopefully we'll, we'll get better guidance as well as, as time goes by here. So no, thank you.
Some of the things I look at this is, you know, is efficiencies in, in our workplace and what that means for, for a return on an investment for our community. There's the, there's the feel-good things, there's the things that help people, there's the things that improve on investment in terms of efficiencies with staff. There's things that keep our equipment running and, and conditioned well so that they last longer, or replacement of equipment that, that are costing us a lot of money. So there's a lot of different criteria to go by here, and I think all of them are important to consider as we go through this. Like, I really appreciate this list, you kind of surprised us with it. But I kind of liked it because, you know, you're trying to get out of this what we were thinking before you told us what you were thinking. And I like your, I like, I'm pointing to care, by the way, if you can't see the camera. I like your idea of breaking it up into category, and I really like what you said, let's just, and even if we knock some of these other ticket items in here out, that probably we'll get some funding from the state. That'll leave us an opportunity to fund, you know, in a variety of different departments and different high, high, high needs, and then.
Selfish.
Yeah.
And I, and that's kind of a strong word, but I just think there's so many needs that we have.
Yeah, I, I just, I don't think it's selfish, and oh, I think it's really true.
Mr. Mayor, just a, real quick, Dave, could you now lower the, the screen? I don't think the public can see the, the council anymore. I know I can't.
Well, just so you know, our, our camera has gone off.
Oh.
Mayor, I mentioned to you, we're, we're trying to get it re, re-up again. So you're getting all the audio, not getting the visual right now. We're trying to recover our camera right now, so.
Gotcha, okay, no problem.
So all they get to see right now is you, Michael.
All you need to see. All right, thank you, guys.
And since we've had a cut in our IT department, David is filling those. And that is really a true thing. We have lost one person out of our IT department last fall, we haven't replaced it.
And look at number four on your list.
There you go, Jackie.
That's not me.
And that's not including carp.
Mayor, unless you have more things you want to discuss, I'm going to tell David. It may not be worth it to try and get that camera back up.
I think we're wrapping it up here for the evening. I want to appreciate, I know some, some more people have hopped on here towards the end of this meeting. And I let you know that there's plenty more conversation. It would be my expectation that we'll have a meeting that's just for this, to really hash it out and get a lot of spreadsheets going and, you know, start running numbers up and seeing where, you know, Dave loves spreadsheet, I actually love spreadsheets. I mean, get a few spreadsheets going with real numbers and we start totaling them up and see what it looks like. I know that we're going to want to put in money, you know, we're not going to think of everything, and there'll be needs that come up in the next year or two that we know that will apply to this stuff. There's also future considerations as well. So with that, is there any further comments before I adjourn the meeting? With that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 7:15, and thank staff and everybody for being here.
See you later, Michael.
See ya.